We are live.
We are live. It being nine o'clock, we are going to begin today's proceedings before the special magistrate for code enforcement for the city of Palatka. By way of introduction, my name is Ron Brown. I am an attorney licensed in the state of Florida and pursuant to Florida statutes and the code of the city of Palatka, I've been appointed by the city commission to preside over today's proceedings. This is not a formal court of law. It's what's called a quasi judicial procedure and the procedure is established by state statute. Those procedures require that we follow the basic requirements of due process and fairness and give everyone a chance to be heard, a chance to hear all of the evidence and allegations against them, and a chance to present their own testimony and evidence and rebuttal to what they may hear. It is not going to be something that is going to be overly formal, but we want everyone to have a chance to participate and understand what's happening. One of the requirements however of a procedure such as a quasi judicial procedure is that all the evidence must One of the requirements, however, of a procedure such as a quasi judicial procedure is that all the evidence must be what is called substantial incompetent. That is, it has to be evidence that would cause a reasonable person to accept them as being factually correct. Because of that standard and the necessities of law and meeting that standard, all testimony must be sworn. So I'm going to ask all those persons who will be testifying today to please stand. If you were respondent, you'll be testifying. I'd like you to please stand. Let me know. We have two respondents present today. Please raise your right hand. Take the following. You saw me swear or affirm the testimony you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And let the record show that all the city staff and respondents have responded in the affirmative. We're going to take the cases in the order of the agenda with the exception that those persons who are here in person to respond will receive priority in the order in which you arrive at today's hearing. What's going to happen is that we'll call your case. We're going to ask that you come up to the podium. And when you have an opportunity to speak, please feel free to do so. Make sure you speak into the mic. We are recording all press and all these proceedings today to create a record. And so it's important that you be heard. The city will begin by making its statement of their allegations and the ordinances they believe have been violated. And after that, respondents have an opportunity to make any statements, present any evidence that they may wish to present. And then ask any questions they may wish to ask. And I may have some questions or comments also along the way to help my understanding of what's going on. At the end of proceedings, I'll make a determination whether there's a violation and what remedy. Usually if there's a violation, there can be a fine that the city recommends. Please understand that these are complaints that have gotten to the city's attention. And we're going to try to respond to those as best we can. And please understand it is a process where the city is just trying to get a remedy. As of today's hearing, these are all new cases. You know, there's a way to comply with these without having any undue expense. But it's going to require some effort on everyone's part if in fact there's a violation, but we'll have the determination of that. So we're going to begin with our first case. The case is case number 2022 024. The property at 105 Viking Street in Palatka, the owner of record, Sherry A. Cook. Ms. Cook is, are you here? Please come up and if you'd rather sit until you get a chance to speak, that's fine. I know if you might be more comfortable. Mr. Green?
Yes, this case is a complaint case. It was first observed 05 04 2022. The notice of hand was sent the 3rd of June, the site posting on her property was also 30 June. It's 30 32A trash and debris and also 32A too overgrown grass. I'm going to put some pictures. 510 222.
All right, let me go back again, just to make sure I've got the respondent is here and you are Sherry A. Cook, is that correct? All right, and you received the certified letter from the city? Addressed at 105 Viking Street, Palatka, Florida, 32177.
They said that they sent one out at the beginning of May. I never got that.
Okay.
That was the bond taken complaints of the secret policy.
Right. That is your correct address, however, 105 Viking Street. All right, they're required by law to send it to the official address on the property praiser and tax collector's rolls. And so that will make sure that's correct address for you. You're here, which is a good sign. That's what we will make sure about. All right, so you, okay?
I got the second notice before I get signed for the letter. The notice stays out of that one even though before they said they had the notice.
All right, well, you're here. Okay, that's the important thing in terms of fairness to you. We'll make sure you got notice about it and you're here and have an opportunity to respond to it. And so you're here for that. And Mr. Green?
Yes, I took those 510 222.
All right, and you got two ordinances, 30-32A prohibited conditions and public nuisances, specifically trash and debris. That ordinance provides in pertinent part, accumulation of trash, junk or debris, living and nonliving plant material, hazard trees and stagnant water. And you also cite 30-32A for, I guess, the overgrown grass, but and that section also reads excessive unintended growth of grass weeds, brush, branches and other overgrowth. Mostly this is about the vegetation on the property?
Yes, some trash and debris that's in question.
Show me what you have, please. And can you see, okay, Ms. Cook?
That's most of the overgrown grass on the side and that's.
That was picture two. This is photo three? All right.
And that's the trash and debris.
Right, that being in the carport is not sufficient. That needs to be out of sight. Is that the problem?
That's more of the trash and debris. That was 510 22.
Okay.
That sits 14. She says she's cleaned it up, so I go out. And she calls me again and make sure everything's correct.
So it's pretty overgrown. How much, what's the city looking for, the city believes?
To remove all overgrown grass and brush. And remove the trash, the debris that's on wood. The stuff that's in the carport.
Okay.
That's my seatbelt stuff and I don't consider trash.
I know, that's why I say it's tough.
And that's not the standard, but it's stored outside as where it's visible. And that's the issue with the city. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, did you take the photographs you're presenting today's demonstrative evidence?
Yes, sir.
And do the actee represent the condition of the property on dates on which you took some?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Cook, it looks like what they're asking for is basically, you know, mow the grass, trim the vegetation, get it under control. And then some way store the items that are visible. Now, back up with the picture four, next picture, please. The other way, the other way. Is that stored in the brush? Is that?
No, that's the side view.
Okay, that's under the carport?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. They need, so I understand what the city wants is they want to have those items that are visible stored in some places not visible.
Yes, sir.
And then trim in the yard for the overgrown vegetation.
I showed you the pictures of it's from the yard.
Yes, he just made it this morning.
The only thing I can do is finish cleaning up the carport.
Okay. Well, it's a pretty simple solution. The good news about this is that as of today, there are no fines that accrue as a result of any of this. What the city has the authority to do under the statute and the code that authorizes these proceedings is to bring the allegations, have this hearing, make a determination whether there's a violation. It does seem there is one. As do both ordinances regarding the storage of the material outside. And then the overgrown vegetation, which needs to be cured. The city wants to have this done and I will tell you, they're asking for a fairly generous amount of time, 120 days. Most of the time they look for 30. To take care of this and get it in compliance. There's no fine that accrues unless after October 14th, October 14th is 120th day. Yeah, it goes actually to the 16th. Yeah, because it'll be a Sunday, but come, come October.
The 30 days, that's a time of 30 days.
Yes, the 30 days winds up, yes.
This is 120. Whatever you want, I mean, you have that, you have that authority. You want to go 120?
I think it's more than okay.
All right. Having said that, you basically got till the end of the day on October 16th to get this solved. If on October 17th is not resolved, then a fine of $50 a day can accrue on the property. And the way it works under Florida law and the code is that fine, if it's then not paid for noncompliance, can eventually turn into a lien against the property that the city can foreclose. And that's not something you really want. So this needs to be addressed within the 120 day period. And you're going to need to make sure you stay in touch with Mr. Green and let him know when you've met compliance. Because what you don't want to have happen is nothing happened during that period of time. And then here comes October 17th and now you're out of compliance. And fines may start clicking in at that point. Is that the correct date? October? Am I counting right? Are we that far into the year?
Yes, sir.
Definitely going by too quickly. All right, so we're going to find a violation of section 30-32A of the city code regarding prohibited conditions and public nuisances due to the storage of the materials under the carport and a violation of 30-32A prohibited conditions and public nuisances during the overgrown grass and vegetation on the property. Compliance shall be completed no later than the end of the day on October 16th, 2022, since 16th is a Sunday. An event of noncompliance, a fine of $50 a day shall commence on beginning of October 17th, 2022. And you will get a notice of that by certified mail also by that period of time. If you have any trouble, make sure, make sure you stay in touch with Mr. Green in terms of what's going on. And please understand, these are the types of things that community gets involved in. That's usually who's calling up, asking that something be done about this. So it's not like it's in quietude. Where's Viking Street?
Viking man.
Not by the college?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you'd like, sure, if you want to show what you have now, but it could get you some compliance. Can you send those to the city because they're going to want a copy of it for the record? Well, it looks like she's cleaned up a good bit of it. Have you, when's the last time you saw it?
The 14th.
Okay, when did you do this?
I've been working on it. I can only do a little bit at times as hot as it is. I've got big piles that they're probably picking up. I cut the tree and trimmed it and everything.
I'll tell you what, please send those to Erin. She's going to give you an address and keep up the good work. And you'll be, you won't have any, you won't have to come back here. There won't be any fine or anything. They just want to get it done. Okay? Ms. Cook, thank you for coming today. Next case, 20 days, excuse me, 2020, 2022 026. You're a free woman. Yes, you're never not free. It's just a hearing. This is a property located at 302 South 13th Street in Palatka. And owners of record appear to be Owen Dean Dillaway and Alisa A. Dillaway, husband and wife. Are you Mr. Dillaway? Very well. We have looked like a violation alleged of, again, section 30-32A prohibited conditions and public nuisances, specifically disrepair of the roof. That section of the code provides that failure to replace or repair with similar improved material in a reasonable period, not to exceed 60 days, broken or missing building components, including but not limited to doors, windows, roofing material, siding and drives and walks outside of the right of way, which detract from the aesthetics of neighborhood, shopping area, industrial or the commercial area within the service district. And failure to replace, remove broken fencing or screening, that fencing and screening also as well as the roof, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And those are the aspects of the code. Okay, and Mr. Dillaway, again, we have your address as 304 South 13th Street. That's your official address of record? And did you get the notice registered mail?
Yes.
Okay, he is here. He has taken a note. Mr. Green, maybe?
Yes, first of all, this proactive case for 11 2022, when it first observed. And those in was sent June 2nd. The site posting that is probably was June 2nd.
Okay, did you take all the photographs you're presenting today?
Yes, sir.
And do the actee represent the condition of the property on the date in which you took some?
Yes, sir.
All right, so this photograph number one, so we're looking at the roof of the structure. You know, and it just.
Yes, sir. He corrected a lot of stuff in that picture right there. The debris is gone and the wood, exposed wood and painted. The only thing left is the roof.
Is that underlayment?
That would be the original shingle.
Okay, is it a wooden shingle, cedar shingle? Okay. Okay. And it's very, it looks very weathered and worn. Are those holes in it?
Yes.
Okay, and you got some tin roofing material over a portion of it in this photograph. Let Mr. Green present his case. We'll come back to you. You get all the chance you want to talk. Mr. Green?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Stole up.
And you just got the two photographs?
Yes, sir.
All right, so what does the city want done to bring this into compliance?
Removal appeal with roof, the same material or better material. That's the picture of it. Now we painted the exposed wood and removed all the trash and debris.
So can that roof be fixed in the city's meet city code?
I can tell you, so I'm not a business figure.
So again, goes the question, what instruction do you want to give to the owner regarding what needs to be done?
Repair or replace with similar materials or with a better material suitable to the structure.
And just for the record, the roofing in question is the utility shed, not the main structure of the house. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the roof is the issue. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Dillway?
Well, first of all, I was brought to, it was brought to my attention when he showed off that they were doing it for grants and stuff like that. Said that we were going to try to raise grants in the area. I purchased the house from my real estate agent. She mentioned that there was grants in the area to have this stuff. Party for, except for they are actually for 6th street and no further. So they're not coming to my area yet. The roof itself is, it's deteriorated. I didn't I didn't realize it was going to be as quick as it was for me to have to come and plant. I had been focusing on the house, trying to build it. I just sunk about $23,000 into it trying to fix it up. And a lot of the materials that he was citing were actually stuff that I had pulled out of my house. I just had to deal with it and put it out in sight. Um, to repair that roof specifically, that whole roof has to come off. There's nothing in there that is actually usable. That's the problem. Prior to this recession that we're going into, we're talking about $20,000. Prior to that, because of the foundation, I was looking at a $27,000 bill for foundation. Now, because of all the costs of everything that's happening now, we're probably looking at a hundred grand to do that. So at this point, I have an option from a guy to knock it down. And I'd be glad to do so, but that's not my history that's getting lost. That's y'all's history. I'm not from here. I'm from this. So it's, it's, it's y'all's history that's getting lost. If you want me to knock down, I'll knock down. Okay. But it's not something I can reply. It's just impossible.
One of the issues that I always confront in this role is that I have a very limited amount of jurisdiction that's established by law and code. The only thing I can look at is whether or not there's a violation, whether there's substantial incompetent evidence to support a violation. And some of the other issues you're talking about are extremely vital and important to consideration of how you address it. But that's not something that this venue can handle in regards to that, you know, whatever representations may have been made to you, what the circumstances are in trying to repair it aren't something that this institution is allowed to deal with in those terms. So the only thing we're here today with is there's a violation.
I'm sorry?
The only thing I can deal with today is whether or not there's a violation.
Then it's a matter of what can I do to get into compliance and that's. And I'm going to have to do that because I can't even it's not possible. I've got a, I live on social security. My wife and I have a special needs kid. We don't have any means to deal with this. And like I said, I was told
Well, I'm sorry, what were you told from the city?
He told me that you guys were coming around to do you were doing this and that we're trying to get it. He told me that you guys were coming around to do, you were doing this and that we're trying to get it up so that we could get some grants. That's what I was told.
Again, I don't, I wish I could tell you I had some jurisdiction and way to deal with that at this level. I just do not. And it's not something there, jurisdiction is something that's statutory and I don't have any authority other than to see whether there's a violation, how that that proceeds. I mean, the roof looks like it needs to be repaired. It's got some substantial issues with it. You know, it looks like there is a violation of thirty dash thirty two A was the word of that.
Sir.
They.
It's Mr. Brown.
I have a hundred and twenty days here. Miss Mr.
Mr. Brown, it's me.
Oh, Mr. Green.
When I visited Mr. Bowen. I told him taking pictures, being proactive and. He, that kind of disgruntled, when I told him for the grants, I said, if you come down, I have a good superintendent supervisor. And we would try to help you find a company or a Florida, somebody like D E O or somebody to help him. I just see we're doing the for the grants. Now he's so, this one, he might hurt me wrong, but that's what I told him.
And Mr. Dillway, please respond to that. Again, that's.
It's, it's, it doesn't really matter. It's, I still, I'm in a situation where I don't have to be. And I don't know how I'm going to come into compliance. I'm coming to clients as much as I can.
Well, my only suggestion is you work with the city as best you can and see what you can do to get it enough in compliance. You can satisfy them. I'm looking, the city's requested a hundred and twenty days again. Is that going to be a good number for you all? Yes, Mr. Green, is that the number you want? If, and stay in touch with them and see what kind of progress you make. Mostly, I can't speak with them. They'd like to see progress on these things. Just somebody ignores it is what causes more difficulty after you set an order. But nonetheless, they're asking for compliance by, it'll be October sixteenth, and the Friday fourteenth is the last business day. You got until the sixteenth, noncompliance would begin on the October seventeenth twenty twenty two. A fine of twenty five dollars a day would accrue beginning on that date if there's no compliance. So there's nothing going to happen between now and then in terms of fines, but hopefully something will happen in terms of compliance. And if you decide knock it down, that's another issue, I guess, with permitting that we require demolition.
That would be with the county.
With the county?
Yes, sir.
How come?
We don't have a. I guess. A building inspector, whatever, to make sure you take it down properly. The county handles all that for the city.
All right, but you work with them if that's necessary to get that done. All right, so you're still the contact person there for that. All right. You'll get a notice regarding the order now at the address at three oh two South Thirteenth Street, which is the official address of record. And please stay in touch with them, see what you can do. Okay? Thank you very much.
All for his, Mr. Brown.
For.
On South Thirteenth Street.
South Thirteenth Street, please come forward. Next case, twenty dash twenty two zero eleven. The property at four oh four South Thirteenth Street, Palatka. Owner of record appears to be Gomez, is that correct? Sometimes it's Gomez, depending on the person, properties corporation, and you are, sir. What is your name? Okay, and you're the principal of the corporation, is that correct? All right, just so you know, you weren't here when we had the initial presentation today. This is what's called a quasi judicial proceeding. It is established by state statute and city code regarding the procedures we follow today. The, it's a quasi judicial proceeding, it's not a formal court of law. We don't follow the formal rules of evidence or civil procedure, but we are required by law to follow the basic concepts of due process and fairness. We do, however, have to have substantial incompetent evidence for any decision that's made. And that evidence needs to be in the form of testimony or demonstrative evidence and items. The testimony needs to be sworn. So I ask if you take a note for me? Do you saw me swear or affirm the testimony you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Very well, and again, your name for the record? Mr. Green is going to make a presentation regarding the city's alleged violations, just as a matter of due process. Again, I have a green card from the postal service. And which does not appear to have been signed. The address was twenty four sixty two Ventura Court, Deltona, Florida, three two seven three eight. Is that your mailing address, sir? That is correct. They are required to use the official address as located on the property praiser tax collector's roll and make sure we got the right one. But you didn't get the letter or?
No.
Okay, you did pick it up. Okay. That's a good address for you. All right, the city's. Looks like three alleged violations. One of thirty dash one seventy six exterior property areas were bought and claim of no roofing. Green, do you have a copy of that ordinance in the packet?
This is, should be all out now.
Thirty three two A. Oh, here it is. Thirty has one seventy six B. Where a vacant lot exists or is created through demolition, the owner must maintain the property according to section thirty dash thirty one of the city code. What would that be? What's requirement under thirty dash thirty?
Keeping the property up to minimum standards.
Which is what?
Having roofing and having a property, exterior property maintained.
All right, so. Does this relate then to the violations of thirty dash thirty two A and thirty dash one seventy? Thirty dash thirty two A. Prohibited conditions and public nuisances subsection ten, it appears. Failure to replace with similar or improved material in a reasonable period not to exceed sixty days. Broken or missing building components, including but not limited to doors, windows, roofing materials, siding and drives, walks outside right of way which detract from the aesthetics of the neighborhood, shopping area, industrial area or other commercial area within the service district. Also an alleged violation of thirty dash one seventy one. New windows and broken windows, that section and subsection A and B, subsections A and B. States every broken, cracked or missing window should be repaired or replaced with glass. All windows must fit tightly and have size of proper size and design. Mr. Green?
Yes, sir. This was also a proactive case. It was an old case, but we came back and see, we brought it back up. First reserve on February twenty second, twenty twenty two. A note here was sent June second, twenty twenty two. And the site posting was probably June second, twenty twenty two.
Okay.
These are some of the pictures I took in February.
Have you visited the property, have you visited the property since?
Yes, sir. June fourteenth, I revisited.
All right, well, this first photograph you're showing me dated again, two twenty one twenty two. Showing four oh four South Thirteenth Street. Which violations are we looking at there?
This is a picture of the house from the road, all around picture of the house. The next picture will show the violations.
Okay.
That pictures.
That's the roof.
Yes, so February twenty first, twenty twenty two.
Can that roof be, oh goodness, okay. It's this second photo, that's if I was photo number one.
That's now, wait, you see some pictures that you'll see. Just keep rolling.
Now looking photo number two.
Yes.
Is that roofing material that's drooping down?
I would suppose, I'm not sure. It looks like tar paper to me.
Let him talk and then you get say everything you want. I want to make a clean record. Okay, go on the next one.
That's the side of the roof.
All right, what's the violation there?
Same thing.
It's just roofing material lost the sign. Is there supposed to be, is there supposed to be a fascia there?
Yes, sir.
Right, next.
That's the broken window.
Okay. Is that door open?
Well, so.
Okay, but it's, it's just covered. The house is secured.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the studio property right there that has no roof on.
Okay, is this like a carport or something?
Yes, sir.
That has to have a roof?
Yes. That's what is there.
Okay.
What is that?
I will see. That was photo five, next.
That's now.
Okay. So based on what, what's your point in this one?
That's what showing before and after.
Okay.
Before I sent the notice in here and after.
Some of it's been replaced, is that what's?
No, that's gone. There's no roof there.
All right, so I'm looking at the roof in the middle there. That's okay. That's not what this is about. This is about.
That's the next door neighbor.
Okay, making sure perspective being what it is.
Yes, that's the roof behind, that's the neighbor behind.
Okay. Next.
That's another picture.
Same photograph?
Yes, sir. That's a close picture. We can see that that's the roof behind. And that's another, that's a now picture of the same picture that you asked me about that happened on the side on the roof. And I was taking six fourteen, twenty two, and that's another picture of the broken one that was taken six fourteen.
Are those the only broken windows?
Yes, sir.
Had issue?
Yes, sir.
Are these in the front of the house?
That's behind the house. You can see it from Oak Street.
Anything else? Right, did you take the photographs you're presenting today's demonstrative evidence?
Yes.
And do the actually represent the condition of property on date in which you took?
Yes, sir.
All right, Jones, it looks like we have a roofing problem and a window problem. And just for your record, I'm not those guys. That's the city over there, but I'm just, I'm just the magistrate, but. And let the director, Mr. Cutry has received your permit. Have you seen an application before?
No, sir. I spoke to Mr. Stone, then I told him that I still was sending him the notes for hearing and everything. And I understand the problem with getting the permit is behind and that we still had to go on with the case just in case, because we have some people that try to.
Well, here's, here's the good. Here's the good news about this. You know, if, and it appears to me there is a violation regarding the roof. It needs to be repaired and replaced, probably replaced. And the windows need to be fixed. That's fine, hang on. And the good news about this is, is that compliance, the city is again asking for a hundred and twenty days, which will take you through October sixteenth twenty twenty two. Everybody's now got this in process. So there's no fine. It's going to accrue until October seventeenth. You get that part seventy five bucks a day, so everybody needs to make sure this gets done with regard to it. But it looks like you got your process, but getting the permit, you still gotta get the roof. Now, so let me ask you this, how far past getting a permit does he need to go by October seventeenth?
We spoke to the county and permanent visit and they said it was behind about a month, so we understand your hardship. But we're trying to, as long as we can get some progress and we can see that you're working on it, we would look at trying to use some extension. But so as of October seventeenth, the date, if you can show that you have a permit and have started working on the roof. We would definitely look at that, take that consideration before we make any kind of direct plans. And that, we understand that, sir, and that's why we're saying, once you get the permit, keep, keep in touch with David, once you get the permit and once you start work, there's still progress. We understand and we trust me, we have reached out to the county and they are letting us know that they are backed up, so we understand it's a disconnect.
Send something to them, they come back, they need something else. Like, you know, architect, I spent forty eight hundred dollars on an architect and every time I reply or something, they come to comments. You just gave them two comments again last week. If you see they wanted what they wanted, and I already said them that stuff, that's not a thing. I said them the stuff, this isn't what happened, so maybe it's my that messed up, maybe missed it or something. But they need a more, more information on how the trust is going to go and stuff like that, so.
I think, I think the magic word here was effort, progress. Keep them notified as to what's going on, have them come out and take a look at the progress and make sure that they're aware of it. Don't let this let now lag and it's up to them at this point. Like I said, you don't want to come October seventeenth and not have sufficient progress if they start saying there's no compliance and that'd be a fine. Because the next time you come in front of me, it's about a lean and I don't want to go there. I got, I'm not arguing with you on that, on that subject. This is, and again, usually when things get this far that they make it to the official magistrate, what this is about is motivation. Something needs to be done. Usually somebody's complained about this situation. And, and it just needs to be taken care of and I appreciate the, you know, the problems of dealing with bureaucracies, but it is what we deal with them. Now, you will get a copy of the order signed today by certified mail at your address. And you come up here today from. Where are you from? Yeah. Deltona, we came away. Okay, well, I'm glad you came up and appreciate your time. All right, have a good day. All right.
That's not my department.
Yeah, I would say, give us a call offline and we'll see if we can find you somebody that can help you out. We can't, I can't give you nobody right now.
Have a good day. All right, which case do you want to call next? Does make.
Let's try one thousand one North Sixteenth Street.
North Sixteenth Street? All right, case number twenty twenty two oh twenty five, property one thousand one North Sixteenth Street in Palatka. Ownership is listed as West Florida Wholesale Properties Three LLC. I noticed that. The address was sent of the certified mail, which was returned to sender, no such street address was West Florida Wholesale Property Three, five thousand nine North. Is that Conrad? Central Avenue Tampa, Florida, three three six oh three. Postal Service says there was no such street. Is this address the exact address on the property praiser and tax collector's rolls?
Yes, sir.
Had any contact with anyone from West Florida Wholesale Property?
No, sir. But I want to say that. I guess I did. I got a green card back from them as the voluntary compliance. Yes, sir. Volunteer compliance that was sent five sixteen, twenty twenty two.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Same as I, as I sent the note to him, the same address, that's in the voluntary compliance, but two.
Right. You did a notice of filing, an affidavit?
The voluntary compliance, I sent that same address.
Yeah.
What is it? No such address. I sent the voluntary compliance to the same address on June, on five sixteen, twenty two, and it came back signed.
Okay, show me. Let me see that copy in here.
Yes, sir.
I don't see that coffee. That's why I was a little confused. Green card, blank green card, blank green card, blank green card. You know? All right. Somebody signed it. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that one didn't make it into the packet. Yeah, that one didn't make it into the packet. So we don't need an affidavit of service.
That's due upon the property.
Okay. You did serve it then?
Yes, sir. This is the one, this is the picture.
All right. Just so you know, I don't see the affidavit of service either, but.
This is right here, sir.
I'm sorry. I'm just looking at what's in up here. Those hearing, statement of violation. Photograph. Okay, it's in back of that. There you go. Very well. With the record show, an affidavit of service was signed on June sixth and indicate service by posting May twenty-seventh at both the property and at Flag of City Hall. And thank you, Mr. Green. Organization is everything. All right. And let me, based on the fact that we have two levels of service, let me inquire, is there anyone here representing West Florida Wholesale Properties Third LLC? Let the record show that there is no one who has responded to that call. Looks like we do have adequate service of process regarding this case. It looks like the city has requested rulings on three violations, thirty dash one sixty-nine, building fronts and sides of budding streets or public areas due to deteriorating paint. City code section thirty dash one seventy-one, broken, due to broken windows, and city code section thirty dash thirty-two A, prohibited conditions and nuisances of roofing and disrepair. Just for the record, pertinent sections, thirty dash one sixty-nine, reading subsection A, all deteriorated structure and decorative elements visible from a public right of way shall be repaired or replaced. All exposed wood should be stained or painted. Every portion be clean and graffiti, litter, dirt, or other debris where surfaces were once painted. Or stained, not more than ten percent of surface may be free of paint or stain. Also alleged violation as to thirty dash one seventy-one, every broken, cracked, or missing window should be repaired or replaced with glass. And thirty dash thirty-two A prohibited public conditions and nuisances figured to repair with similar or improved material in a reasonable period not to exceed sixty days. Broken or missing building components, including but not limited to doors, windows, roofing materials, siding, drive and drives, walks outside of the right of way, which should track from the aesthetics of the neighborhood, shopping area, industrial area, or other commercial area within the service district. We've got three code violations. And you have some photographs, though?
Yes, sir.
Did you take all the photographs you're presenting today?
Yes, sir.
And do they actually represent the condition of the property and the data in which you took them?
Yes, sir.
Very well. North Sixteenth, um, north, north historic district or just, just a little bit afterwards?
Yes, I saw twelve blocks away from the office of this.
Okay, this is a, this is well up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I know that is true. Okay, proceed.
Yes, this is the own photo for eight twenty-two. That is the whole round picture of the house.
Okay. Next. Photograph marked one.
Yes, sir. That's, oh, that's picture I've taken all for eight twenty-two to the roofing.
All right, this is thirty dash thirty-two, eighteen. And that roof, is that a wooden roof?
Yes, sir.
And it's rotted and with gaps in the roof?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's the.
This photo two?
Yes, that's the soft that I would feel.
Is that's collapsed soft it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, photo three.
That's another picture. That's the side of the house. That's Ocean Street. That's Ocean Street side.
Okay. Is that, um?
It's collapsed. Stop it all of us coming down.
Are those, are those trusses collapsed or?
No, sir. That's the soft coming down and the top part, I think that's the part of the roofing that's bowled out. See, we have bowled out.
Okay.
And it's coming down.
Just from moisture and?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, photograph four.
And that's behind the house. That's also on the pole and that thing.
Okay. So this house is going to need a complete re-roofing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, please. Five.
When that's a picture of the roofing and disrepair and the paint deteriorating, closer picture of the paint deteriorating.
It's a, what I'm looking at on the top, that black area, is that the roof fault?
Yes, sir. That's stop it falling off.
And the paint deterioration, what are we looking at here?
Round, round that one and some of the back of the house and a little bit of shade that day.
Well, you, that needs to be repainted or can it be cleaned?
Yes, sir. It may be painted.
Okay.
It's clean. The paint is deteriorating. It's fading.
So it's faded and blotchy and otherwise aesthetically displeasing, right?
That's another picture of the roof deteriorating a little bit and then the paint, the roof and the, and the disrepair and the painting.
Okay, so this again is mostly about mildew and faded paint?
Yes, sir.
And then looks like the roof on the top, is that roof supposed to have that angle in it?
No, sir. That, the back part also has a hole in it. If you look to the back.
Okay. Oh, this is about the open underneath the, where the soft it should be. Okay. It's number seven.
That's a broken window.
Okay. And which side of the house is?
That's on Ocean Street.
And next.
That's wonder right there. That was some question, I think. They said plywood on the outside. That that's, you can see that from Sixteenth Street.
Right. Number eight, number nine. And it's, it's like one, is it one B?
Yes, sir. That's now, that's.
We're back to the beginning.
Yes, sir. This is fourteen.
All right. So they need a new roof and repair broken windows. And basically you need to paint and pressure wash the house.
Yes, sir.
Had any contact with the owner at all?
No, sir.
Any neighbors or anyone you know have contact with you?
No, sir. This is a private case. Another private case.
This corporation is located where?
Sir.
Where is this corporation located? Tampa. Again, calling for anyone representing West Florida Wholesale Properties Three, excuse me, LLC. Again, seeing and hearing that one, we're going to find a violation based on the evidence and testimony presented of municipal city code section thirty dash one sixty-nine, building fronts and sides of budding streets or public areas due to deteriorating paint on all four sides of the house. Uh, requiring a repaint, violation of municipal code city plot, section thirty dash one seventy-one, broken windows due to broken windows on sites on Ocean Street side and which other side? Just on which sides of house? Ocean Street? Broken windows?
Broken ones. Yes. You see, it's behind the house, which you can see.
Ocean Street on that, on that side of the house. And have those repaired and a violation of city political code thirty dash thirty-two A, prohibited conditions and nuisance. The roof is in a total state of disrepair with gaps, worn materials, broken soft, had open soft it uh, and needs to be replaced. Um, we're going to find that the violations occur and require compliance within one hundred and twenty days of the hearing. That date falls on Friday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Compliance, basically will fall over to October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the event of non-compliance on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. A daily fine of seventy-five dollars will accrue per day. All right. How about one oh one Madison Lane, one thousand one Madison?
Okay.
All right. This is case number twenty twenty-two zero twenty. The property one thousand one Madison Lane, Palatka, Florida. Um, this property is titled in the name of the heirs of Anna Hamm. H A M M in Kira, Virginia Hamm. And we have, again, no, no sign, green card?
She sent the voluntary compliance letter back, signed, and then I spoke with her. I want to say that day, or the fourteen she called me and said she won't be able to make it because she had to work and she was working on getting anyone to remove the, the structure, the building.
And who did you talk to?
Oh, it's, it's not Virginia Hamm anymore. It's, she getting the mail there, but it's a Janice Hamm now.
Janice Hamm. But the official address is the heirs of Anna Hamm and Kira, Virginia Hamm.
Yes, sir.
But Janice Hamm is one. But this address, P O box nine nine two or seven?
Two.
Two. Palatka, Florida, three two one seven eight zero nine nine two. Would be correct. Is the correct address, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so she didn't sign it, but did you post it?
Yes, I posted. The affidavit and everything on there.
And I'm looking behind the photo showing posting and.
Yes, sir. And then the green card for the voluntary compliance, she said that backside. It's the same as I, the address that I used for the notes of hearing.
All right. So you've had both the posting on May twenty-seventh. And, oh, here it is. And I signed green card. Looks like it was signed on May fifth.
That's voluntary compliance.
Right.
And this is I say my address. As well as it too.
And so, and this was again signed by?
Janice Hamm.
Okay. Right. And again, as you, I'll, I'll acquire one more time. I know, no one here, anyone who's an heir of Anna Hamm or Virginia Hamm present and seeing, hearing them one. Okay, we've got three violations. Uh, prohibited conditions and public nuisances and a violation of thirty days thirty-two A trash and debris. Uh, also thirty days thirty-two A prohibited conditions, overgrown grass and brush. And a third violation of thirty days thirty-two A, building destroyed and burned. Sounds pretty severe. For the record, section thirty dash thirty-two A subsection two provides excessive unintended, excessive and unintended growth of grass weeds, brush branches, or other, other overgrowth. It's considered a nuisance. Thirty days thirty-two A, A one accumulation of trash, junk, or debris, living and non-living plant material, hazard trees, stagnant water are also considered prohibited conditions and nuisances. And thirty is thirty-two B prohibited conditions, abandoned property includes not limited to rect or derelict property which has been left behind. The former owner does not intend to come back, pick it up or use it. Examples may include not limited to possessions left in the house, possessions left outside of structure, vehicles, vessels, etc., left behind or beside a road for a period of time not to exceed ten days. This is an abandoned vehicle case then?
No, sir. Their house.
Well, what are we looking at? And why is that one under law?
Not just with default, my own highlighter, sir.
Okay. So are we calling it derelict property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because it's burned?
Yes, sir.
All right. That would be thirty dash thirty-two B abandoned property, rect or derelict property, been left behind and come back, pick up or use it. Just so I'm looking at this, the way this ordinance reads, examples may include not limited to possessions left in a house, possessions left outside of structure, vessels, deserted, left behind a road for a period of time not to exceed ten days. But that's not the house itself.
I will figure out that maybe derelict property.
Okay. Well, it says building destroyed or burned.
Yes, sir. Oh, it's been like that. It just caught on fire really in January. It's, it's been like that. I know about it ten years. And it just caught on fire.
Is there more to thirty days thirty-two B that discusses that I don't have? Good. You have to be careful about headings when you look at ordinances because it does say building destroyed or burned, but the, the section that's included doesn't actually talk about them. It just, you have the definition. There's got to be more to that, that ordinance.
It could be on thirty-two A, A seven property threatening or endangering the public health, safety, or welfare of city residents.
Okay. You got the code book?
Yes, sir. Thirty-two, thirty-two, eight, A seven property threatening or endangering the public health, safety, or welfare of city residents.
Right. Well, let me take a look at it.
Okay.
Because somewhere in thirty days thirty-two, what I noticed is that the, the owner got notice of exactly what you're, you're alleging. I know that, but to satisfy the statute, you're going to have to have.
Yeah.
You got.
Yeah. Being right.
Which when you read property threatening. Yeah, okay. That says seven property, subsection seven property threatening, endangering, public health, safety, welfare, security. Well, that's fine, but who's got, just for the record, who's got the rest of thirty dash thirty-two B? See if you can pull that up for me. Because it talks about the building being burned, but it's just not here. Now, I think I make sure you do is cite is, be very precise for what you cite them for, and so that matches up with your facts.
I have the ordinance in front of me. This is Valeria.
Okay.
Okay, abandoned property includes, but is not limited to rect or derelict property, which has been left behind when it appears that the former owner does not intend to come back, pick it up or use it. Examples may include, but are not limited to possessions left in a house, but less possessions left outside of structure, vehicles, vessels left behind or beside a road for a period of time not to exceed ten days. And then there is a definition for an abandoned vehicle. And then there's a definition for bait, actual cost, attractive nuisance.
And city. There's more to that ordinance.
Yes.
And somewhere in that ordinance, it looks like with the way this, you're copying straight from the code, there's something in there that talks about burned buildings. Was it this, if this section has been provided to me, comes from a code book somewhere?
I have Munich code pulled up here, sir, for the full thirty thirty-two.
This is thirty thirty-two B.
B. B is provided for the definitions of what's included for the purpose and intent of.
All right, we'll roll up some more because definitions are one thing, then what do you do with the definitions? I mean, I can't read that from here.
Uh, C is for declaration of nuisance. D is duties and maintenance requirements of property owners and permissible uses. And scrolling down to E imminent public health threat. That would be, and then that, that's where what concludes thirty thirty-two. Yes, sir. I can print out a copy for you if you'd like. Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So B here is specific. Yes, sir. And then begins with C for declaration of nuisance.
City prohibits existence of any nuisance that the fire reasons is dangerous and I didn't have revision. I was not included in the fact. I just make sure.
Yes, sir.
Using magnets.
Yes, sir. Continue to go up?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
City manager doesn't need to.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's a different form of the code than what was provided to me.
Okay.
And I don't know what, where the copy was that I got with. They talked about burned buildings. But when I read this, the thing that looks like it might be, it doesn't really talk about burning buildings specifically. Go back down. It talks about the imminent public threat. Go back to, to the front. This existence of any nuisance. The one might apply.
Okay. So this would still be thirty thirty-two?
What part of the code? That in the packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sir.
What what did we send in the packet having their notice of violation?
We.
Exactly what I have?
Yes. Thirty thirty two B.
Yeah.
Written today with a problem.
Yeah. Okay, here's the thing, you got three times in the original violations, we talk about thirty days thirty two A. The code provision that's included thirty dash thirty two B.
Are you talking about you are you reading out the cover page or you reading off my packet this?
Well, I want to know. It's due process question.
Yes, sir.
The respondent has an has a right to know exactly what the violation is and the ordinances that are alleged to be violated.
Yes, sir. I'm saying, are you reading, you getting a violation that you are reading, are you taking it off the cover page here? Are you taking off my cover page?
Well, let me ask you this, when we sent this notice of violation out and we posted this notice, what did they get in that notice?
They got.
That is the legal steam.
Yes, they got thirty thirty two B.
Okay, show me, show me, show me what you got there, let me make sure that the record has that. Was the due process thing is, and what I should really have is exactly what you sent to the.
Yes, you actually have what I bring to mind.
The in the notice letter. Right. All right, the statement of I like is in fact, I got that the part of God. It just says thirty days thirty two B overall. Okay, it just didn't match up with what I got in my packet. Oh, I know, well, it says A, and then it says B, it doesn't talk about burned buildings. And like I said, it's a different text than that text that she was showing us. Might be better to make sure those match up so that we got the same, we're all on the same page when it comes to creating a record. But whatever you said, if this gets appealed and it goes to circuit, what's gonna be in that record, it's gotta be in here. To show that there is notice of all this. So what what we're citing is thirty dash thirty two B. Might be good to send him a copy of the ordinance when you go, and could you roll that back up, please, to the actual?
To to photos, sir?
Yeah, pass the definitions. Yeah, I need I need to put in the record. The whole text of thirty dash thirty two B, which is what the city cited.
I just want, sir, I'm not sure what just happened to my file there. Are you asking to see the notice of hearing again or?
I need the thirty dash thirty two B that you've had up there before.
Okay.
And that needs to be a part of the record, I'm gonna read it in the record. Okay, this is thirty dash thirty two of the codified city for lack of code. And talks about prohibited conditions and public nuisances. And it talks about in subsection B, need to roll up some please. Keep going, next section. I'd be D, hang on, or C or C or D.
Yes, sir.
Declaration and city prohibits, just as any nuisance define your room for the following reasons, property is dangerous and hygienic and healthy. Use is because it appreciates potential can depreciated value of neighborhood property. And then the subsection one talks about it should be the duty of the owner of property to eliminate. On their lot tractor parcel of land, any public nuisance as provided by the statutes of the state of Florida city code. Including not limited to excessive growth of grass weeds brush hazards trees and other overgrowth are on the property. That's portions of the adjoining public right of way between the property paid to greatest street conditions. Which endanger human life substantially affects the utility, livability, safety or security of the occupants nearby occupants. Passersby conditions or which winter air, food or drink unwholesome determined to be the health of human beings. Fire hazards, structurally unsound fences or structures, abandoned buildings when they are unsecured, unsecureable. And when by reason of abandonment or property to collect or contain hazards of such unsafe conditions. And any attractive nuisance which may prove detrimental to health or safety to others when a building. Or in the premises of the building or upon an improved lot. So it looks like if you cited thirty days thirty to be, it looks like what you were going for was. Uh, D one which uh, C and D one which look like they deal with the proper the effects of the building being destroyed by fire. And in the future, I think you need to include that when you want to cite something, cite the code. And so there's no discrepancy and that that's the code included in the record. It is cited in the note, but I I put a copy of the actual text you're citing and the and the notice that goes out to them also. But take that notice of thirty two B and um, see what's gonna go on, all right, let's see what we got. In terms of evidence. And you say you had talked with the representative of the owner?
Yes, sir.
What what's their reaction to this?
They don't have the money to have it be removed.
All right, so show me what you have. This is a photograph, did you take the photographs you're gonna show us?
Yes, sir.
Does the act represent the condition of the property on the date in which you took them?
Yes, sir.
Right, proceed. Property, that's the effective service. Upside down. Thank you for being a goodness, and this property is Madison Lane?
Yes, Madison Street is what, that's where I'm taking the picture from, but they also had, they have a road in between. There and olive called Madison Lane is a trail.
Did the city officially condemn this yet? Is that an orange condemnation sign on the door wall?
So that's a some kind of electric box.
Has it been condemned though?
No, sir.
Okay.
Um, that's what it like January twenty four, twenty twenty two.
Okay. And for the record, it appears the whole house is in it. One side it's collapsed, the roof has collapsed, the house, it looks like it suffered substantial fire damage, windows are open. Unpainted, looks like the paint's probably been seared off the house.
It was like that before it burns, sir.
And this is the trash and debris? Well, actually, the overgrown grass and brushes, like you're looking at in three. Okay. And there's some trash and debris there and then is that what one?
One B.
B.
And that's that's June fifteen twenty twenty two.
Does still look like that, oh, that's recently, okay. Madison's in North City.
North side, yes.
North side, okay. Just like it's a pretty big lot, is this?
I don't, it was two houses on that, it tore one house down and the house was left on.
Okay.
That's one street.
Okay.
Oh, eleven street, that's like ten street, nice.
So the owner's aware, but doesn't have any money.
Yes, sir.
So the city's remedy is that house needs to be totally demolished and. And the. Debris in the yard needs to be.
Yes, sir.
If they.
Remove all trash and. Well, cut the yard and move out.
If there if there's been no structure on the property, do they have to maintain the 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 grass?
No.
Okay. Probably gonna have to clear it to find all the debris.
Yes, sir.
Right. So it looks like we're gonna find a violation of municipal code section thirty dash thirty two A. Due to trash and debris on the property petition prohibited conditions and public nuisances. Thirty dash thirty two A overgrown grass and brush. Again, prohibited conditions of public nuisances. And then it's like thirty dash thirty two B, which was what was cited in the notice to the owner. Regarding the condition of the structure which poses a hazard to health, safety and welfare of the houses destroyed by fire collapsing. Roof is collapsed, sides of the house have collapsed. Uh, it's it's an endangerment, uh, it needs to be destroyed. Uh, we're going to uh, in order finding the violations. Uh, requiring the property brought into compliance within one hundred days, hundred twenty days of today's hearing, that date falls on. Uh, Friday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty two, noncompliance or wherever will not begin until Monday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Since uh, the next day for compliance would be a Saturday. In the event of noncompliance, a seventy five dollar day fine will accrue beginning on October seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Next property is case number twenty twenty two zero twenty nine. The property one, excuse me, seventeen Eagle Street apartment one. And the owner of record appears to be. I have the way this is drafted M tag custodian for Colorado asset, is that the way that's listed? Interesting. And that's exactly the way it's listed on that. It looks like you have a signed green card.
Yes, sir.
And this was assigned in Atlanta, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
And. The dress looks like it was six thousand. Six thousand Feldwood Road lockbox four oh nine five eighty four, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three four nine. It's like Meg Tech custodian for Colorado. Asset. Interesting, all right. And it looks like we have. Again, four violations, first of them of section thirty dash thirty two A prohibited conditions and public nuisances due to roofing disrepair. Thirty dash thirty two A prohibited conditions and public nuisances overgrown grass and brush. Municipal code. Section thirty dash one sixty nine, building fronts inside the budding streets rotten weakened wood. And municipal code section thirty dash one seventy rear sidewalls deteriorating sidewalls. Just so we have the record. Where the codes looks like thirty dash one sixty nine, the section is. A all deteriorated structure and decorative elements visible from a public right of way should be repaired or replaced. Every such part of a structure visible from a public right of way or budding street should be made structurally sound. Rotten or weakened portions should be removed, repaired or placed in a manner compatible with the rest of the structure. To match the original materials and construction techniques. Guys, I don't see any other citation. Be some codes, you've got some other citations you wanna read. In thirty thirty two A and thirty dash one seventy, just need to read them in.
Thirty two seven one seventy rear sidewalls, rear sidewalls of all structures should be repaired, painted to present a neat and fresh appearance. Real walls should be painted to cover evenly all miscellaneous paths and field areas or be stuck over to present an even uniform surface. Roofing and disrepair eighteen thirty two eighteen for you to replace. For you to replace or repair with similar or improved material in a regular amount of time not to see sixty days broken or missing. Building components including but not limited to doors, windows, roofing material and siding. Drives walks outside the right of way, which is the right from the status of the neighborhood shopping areas, industrial area or. Other commercial area within a several. A two overgrown grass and brush. Thirty two eighteen A two excessive and unattended growth of grass weeds brush. Branches and other over growth.
So we got. One sixty nine, one seventy thirty thirty two A two thirty thirty two A ten is what was sent in the statement of violation request for here. The. Description violation doesn't relate back necessarily to specific codes, but it does cite the specific codes. All right. Have we got all the citations in?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, you've got some demonstrative evidence, have you had any contact with any of the owners?
No, sir.
Rather than the sign green card. Okay. All right, you have some photographs?
Yes.
Do you take these photographs yourself?
Yes, sir.
Do the act represent the conditions of property on data in which you took some?
Yes, sir.
All right, you can proceed.
This picture was taken five sixteen twenty twenty two, this is on Eagle Street.
And this goodness, this is seventeen eleven Eagle Street apartment one, what's the apartment one about, is this a separate structure?
Thinking someone told me it used to be like a a room and house or some sort of.
All right, but it's one structure.
Yes, sir.
So there's like no set, there's like a not an apartment two somewhere, this is just one one structure and that's what. Entire structure is in violation, it looks like, all right. It's just a number one, and that's just the general disrepair of the the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, number two.
That's the roofing and disappearing.
Okay, are those trusses holding up the side of the building from the outside? Like in the front there, those like support?
The roof is holding together just that falling down.
Okay. I just wondered, they're trying to hold up the sides with that?
No.
Okay. Next.
That's a better picture, that's a roof and disappearing and the rotten weakened wood is also taken five sixteen twenty twenty two.
All right.
That's the overgrown grass and brush, that's the side of house that's also. Taken from Eagle Street.
Okay.
Another picture.
And the number five.
For the picture of the deteriorating sidewalk and rotten weakened wood, it's also taken five sixteen twenty twenty two.
Okay.
Street.
That was number six, number seven?
A closer picture of the siding is deteriorating, this also will take you five sixteen twenty twenty two from.
Most of it's gone, is it not? Is that what I'm looking at? Would it's gone and rotted away?
Yes, that's the siding before the chimney, after the chimney is sort of the same.
Okay.
This is the fourteenth of June.
All right. So what's the remedy, really? I mean, is that can that building be saved?
No, sir.
That building needs to be demolished?
Yes, sir.
Right. So we're talking about the sidewalls, it's building fronts and signs. Roofing is basically all needs to be destroyed to solve it at a minimum. And then you got the overgrown grass and brush.
Yes, sir.
By thirty dash thirty two A. Right, again, a call for anyone who's representing M tag, it's custodian for Colorado asset. Seeing and hearing no one, notice that we do have service, sign green card. No contact with the owner. You did not post a property, is that correct?
I did post a property.
Did post property, the equity of the service is included, very good. Doesn't. All right, based on the evidence and testimony presented today, we're gonna find a violation of section thirty dash thirty two A. Breathed conditions and public nuisances due to the total disrepair of the roof, the roof has collapsed, rotted. Uh, section thirty dash thirty. Uh, section thirty dash thirty two A prohibited conditions and nuisances overgrown grass and brush on the property. Thirty dash one sixty nine, building fronts inside the budding streets of public areas, again rotten and weakened wood, collapsed side of the house, missing siding. Um, houses in total disrepair regarding its sides and fronts. And a section dash one thirty dash one seventy due to deteriorating rear and sidewalls on the property. The city has requested and we will find violations of all four sections of the code. Uh, will issue an order requiring the property brought into compliance within a hundred twenty days of today's hearings. That date is October fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Non compliance, however, cannot begin until October seventeenth, twenty twenty two. In the event of non compliance, a fine of one hundred dollars show a day uh, shall be applied to the property for said non compliance. There being no further business today, we will conclude today's proceeding.